Good evening. Thank you for coming and welcome to the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Uh, before we begin, if you guys could please silence your phones and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, could you take role, please?
Yes, President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Roush is here. Treasurer Fridella is absent. Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blazy.
Here.
Member Lotterback.
Here.
I have six and a quorum.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item two is our consent agenda. We have, uh, item two point one, which is approval of the minutes from the January twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Uh, two point two is a resignation for a parent professional. Two point three involves a teacher layoff. Two point four is approval of the bills. Uh, from December twenty nineteen is listed in the check registers, the amount of six million, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. And item two point five is approval for payment of a legal bill from the Thrun Law Firm in the amount of nine hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, for professional legal fees. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, uh, consent agenda? None?
I'd like to have the two point four pulled out and covered at a later spot in the agenda, please.
Okay, can I get a motion to do that?
Make a motion to move consent agenda, item two point four, to pull that out of the consent agenda to be discussed.
Any support?
Support.
Motion by Brad, support by Pam. Um, I don't think it needs any discussion at this point. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, we will, uh, pull two point four and we'll make it three point six. How's that sound? Okay. All right, so that leaves us two point one, two point two, two point three, and, uh, we'll call it two point five. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to appro- approve two one, two two, two three, and two five.
Support.
Motion by Phil, support by Pam. Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, um, moving on, we are item three point one. We have a, uh, presentation, right?
Yes, we will turn it right over to Mr. Poole and Allison Cincinnati, and I'm not sure which one's leading, so take, take it the way.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about two programs tonight. The first of which, uh, we're going to talk about is the Healthcare Tech Program. And we have a crew with us today. This is Dr. Poole, who is going to be overseeing the program. We have Colleen Markle. Colleen is from Mid Michigan Health. She's the manager of workforce development. And we have Patrick Tobin from Delta College. He's the director of dual enrollment. Healthcare Tech is a program at Midland Public Schools where students who are interested in the healthcare field have an opportunity to explore those interests. It's an amazing program, and we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. Us adults, we're going to try to keep it brief because I know that the, the best part's to come when you get to hear from students and ask them questions. So I'm going to turn this over to Colleen.
Hi, everyone. My name's Colleen Markle. Um, we have been running this program for eleven years. We'll be going into our twelfth year for the next school year. Uh, we are very fortunate to have this, this for our Midland community. It's a great partnership between Delta College, the school, and Mid Michigan Health. The students gain an enormous experience with a year full of maturity and independence, and most importantly, they gain a focus in what they want to major in in college. We do have a few students that occasionally will decide they don't want to go into healthcare, which is still okay, but most of the students, ninety-nine point nine percent of the students, realize they want to go in healthcare. They've seen what happens at the bedside, the hard work that it takes, and they choose a wide variety of careers from nursing and medicine and pharmacy and whatever it may be, and it's, it's been hugely successful. We're very fortunate.
A little bit more about the nuts and bolts of the program. The Healthcare Tech Program is a two-year program. It is open to students in Midland County, but by and large, uh, Midland Public Schools have the majority of the students. Year one of the program is being enrolled and taking, uh, our Healthcare Tech One course as a junior, as well as taking Human Body Systems. If you're from Midland Public Schools, which is one of our Project Lead The Way courses. If they're from, uh, another district such as Bullet Creek or Coleman, students will take our, the Anatomy and Physiology class. That's the first year of the two-year sequence. Patrick's going to talk a little bit about the second year?
So the, the classes are pretty self-explanatory. They ultimately earn twelve credits at Delta College. First semester, they take three courses. Two are face-to-face at the Midland Center, probably one more year in the fall of the Midland Center, and then the following year will be the downtown, uh, Midland Center. So they take Math one seventeen, which is math for allied health. They take Philosophy two fifteen, which is healthcare ethics, and then they take medical terminology online as their third class. And then second semester, they take our CNA with a lab, so that's five credit hours. I think it's about seven contact hours. So in the end, they end up with twelve credits. And at Delta College, about eleven and a half percent of our head count is dual-enrolled students, so they're high school students taking classes in college. And this is one of the more unique programs, an absolutely fabulous program, which is very evidenced by the few minutes I had to talk with these three young ladies that will be speaking very soon. So thank you for your support.
Just to highlight a couple pieces from the Healthcare Tech Program. The Healthcare Tech Program provides, uh, students with entry-level coursework and a great opportunity to have a better understanding of, of what's available to them in the healthcare tech, uh, world, in the healthcare. We know that when we're looking at some of the, uh, local data, regional data, national data about healthcare fields, that's an area of, of great need where we're working hard to, to fill, uh, those pieces. When students complete this program, they have the opportunity to earn twelve Delta College credits, as well as two credits towards high school graduation. In addition to that, students have an opportunity to gain valuable work experience, working, uh, with Colleen at Mid Michigan as a co-op. And one of the selling points for this is students who successfully complete this program can obtain their CNA certificate upon, uh, completion. And so they can go right from high school and move right into the world of the workforce. So it's pretty impressive. So we're going to turn it over to the students, and we have Sandea De Bruin from Dow High, Haley De Forest from Midland High, and Christina Owens from Midland High. And we're going to give them the chance to talk with you about, uh, two pieces. I asked them if they would share two pieces, give a highlight from the program, and talk about something that they've learned.
Hi, the first highlight I want to share with you guys is something big in the hospital, and that's patient advocacy and what that means as a CNA and nurse and physicians. And it's really important. We spend so much time with patients, more than the nurses see the patients. We're in there constantly. Um, they like to talk to us, and it's very important to advocate for your patient and what your patient needs because the nurses may not always see that, and you spend time with your patients, and as you get to know them, you know what they need. Um, and the second thing, the biggest thing that I have learned is respect for everyone. You're going to have disagreements. Your patients aren't always going to be the happiest, but if you can find the common ground of respecting them and respecting that they're human, um, it goes a long ways, and your patients respond to that, and so do the people you work with.
Hello. Hello, my name is Haley De Forest, and I am also a co-op at the hospital. Um, one highlight I want to point out is how this program prepares us for the future. We are just thrown into the hospital, and we start following nurses and techs, and we get to understand what it really feels like to work in a hospital. Um, we are able to get, we're able to mature faster because we are, um, working with the patients firsthand, and it's a great experience. We learn so much more than what you could have taught us in a classroom. We learned a lot last year in our healthcare one program, but now, working hands-on in the hospital, there's so much that we grow on when we're learning. Um, something that I have learned throughout the year is a lot of maturity and professionalism. Um, working in a hospital, you encounter a lot of things, and it really, you get some tough skin, and you're able to be mature compared to all the other students that are, um, going to high school. You see a lot of different things and experience a lot of different things, and so just perspective compared to the other kids. We're able to, um, mature and know how to interact with others in the healthcare field and just in society, like an adult would.
Hi, my name is Christina Owens, and I also work at the hospital with Sandea and Haley, and I wanted to talk about my highlight. So my highlight is connecting with the patients. As a, we help the techs a lot on the floors, and it has given us the opportunity to see numerous patients, and each patient has their own story and their own backstory, and they always find a way to tell us, and it's just very encouraging and rewarding to hear their stories and hear how much we're helping them. You hear all the time that the hospital employees do an amazing job. They're very kind and supportive, and it's just really rewarding to hear that. And it just, it encourages me to pers- pers- proceed with my decision to become a nurse. And what I have learned most was, like Haley, I have, um, felt the, the learning curve of becoming an adult. We go to work, and we go to college, and then we go to high school. Going to work, we have to work with people who we may like, who we may not like. We have to learn how to do everything correctly. Going to college, we have to show up on time. We have to do all o- all of our work, and it's not like high school. High school, you go to class one hour, five days a week, for six different classes. For college, you go sometimes two hours a day, sometimes five days a week, sometimes it is every other day. And I think that this has created a maturity among all of the students who are in this program because it has taught us how to deal with college classes and how to deal with work, and it has just broadened our perspectives on everything that we need to be prepared for entering the workforce.
And we wanted to make sure we saved time for the opportunity for questions. So what questions might you have?
I have a question. It might be for Dr. Poole, I'm not sure. Um, it was mentioned that the students can earn twelve credits from Delta as well as two credits, high school credits? How does that work?
So they, I believe they take, uh, you're putting me right on the spot, Mrs. Singer, I like this. I think they take seven credits first semester and then five the second, so it would equal twelve. And that would be the, um, the class would be equal to two hours, uh, when it comes to, um, the class both semesters. So that's where they get the two credits, one for first semester, one for second semester. So it's right part of their schedule, and I know that they did say that. Doesn't mean that it has to be at the time when school is going on. And we have a lot of students that dual-enroll that have classes at six o'clock at night, but it's still part of their schedule. So for audit purposes, we need to make sure that it's part of their schedule so that we pay for it. Um, but yeah, I know that Delta, uh, and then if, if you were to move on from there, I know that I, Mr. Tobin was talking about. Uh, our Wednesday parent meeting for next year's students, um, was just talking about there are colleges that would accept those as well when it comes to transferring even, um, away from Delta, so there's always those options as well.
Thank you.
I have a question for Colleen. Uh, can you give us an idea of the percentage, if you know it, uh, for retention following the program with Mid Michigan?
So I tell the students, uh, once they take their CNA class at Delta to sit for the exam, I encourage all of the students to work as a CNA, no matter what field they go into in medicine. Because it's experience at the bedside, and many of your programs require those real experience hours that you can't get from a volunteer experience. So wherever they go to school, whether it's out of state, in-state, they, there's always a hospital nearby to go work, especially while they're taking their prerequisites. Uh, we do have, um, students that do not go away to college that do stay on and work at the hospital as, um, a CNA. We call it, so it's a different title for the position, but it is essentially a CNA position. In fact, I saw one today when I went upstairs to visit a student. Um, many of them go to SVSU or Delta or someplace local, so we have hospitals in Midland, Grashit, Mal Pleasant, you know, all over where they can work. And I do encourage that. As you know, many do go away to college, and I say, no matter where you go, go work as a CNA. It'll help your application to whatever program you're trying to get into.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, if I didn't answer your, I don't know the retention rate.
That's okay.
Yeah, specifically.
I have a question for the, the students. Um, could you tell me what grade you're in and your aspirations beyond high school?
So I am a senior at Midland High School, and my goal is to go into pediatric nursing, and I'm really working towards that, and I hope to achieve that goal. I am also a senior at Midland High School, and my plan is to first start out as nursing. I'm planning on going to Grand Valley State University. And then I want to further my education and become a nurse practitioner and maybe participate in a, um, nonprofit organization called Doctors Without Borders, where you go into developing countries and help out there. And so I'm really interested in women's health and, like, education and overseas, and so that's my plan.
My name is Sandea De Bruin again. Um, I plan to work as a CNA at Mid Michigan Hospital while working through nursing school, and then after that, I'll work as a nurse for a little bit. But my end goal is to become a pediatric onc- oncologist, finding different ways to treat chemo not using, or cancer, not using chemo or radiation.
Well, I would just like to thank you girls for sharing, and what aspirations and what an opportunity to have in high school to explore what you want to be, what you want to do when you grow up, and sounds like you've all decided on some really remarkable careers.
One, one last question. How many students are in the program?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Uh, right now, we have twenty students enrolled in the, uh, in the program at Delta College. Of those twenty students, uh, being a part of the Healthcare Tech Dual Enrollment Piece, uh, is a prerequisite to being eligible to participate as a co-op at Mid Michigan. Currently, we have fourteen, fifteen co-ops at, uh, at Mid Michigan. Delta College reserves twenty-four spots for us, uh, Midland Public specific, and in the past, Mid Michigan has reserved fifteen spots for us. So we get to secure that for our students, uh, prior to registration, so we get priority.
That's great. Thank you.
I know I can answer for this next year, so there's, there's currently eighteen people who are applying. Thirteen of them are MPS, three are Coleman, and two are Bullet Creek. Uh, and then of those eighteen, fifteen will hopefully get co-op jobs as well, which their, their interviews are in March, uh, March seventeenth and eighteenth, I believe. Uh, Midland High School and Dow High School when it comes to the interviews. So there's a process that I'm trying to follow and making sure that it's, it's been done the same way that it has in the past, but I mean, I know one little trivia question. I'm sure Mr. Jaster would like this, but he was one of our first teachers of, uh, Healthcare Tech One, so, uh, he's over there sitting, and he's listening to all of it, and I'm sure it hasn't changed at all since you taught it, so. Yeah. Our other component tonight is we're going to look at welding, and, uh, Mr. Pollock, Pollock is here, um, with Abby Markel. Um, and he's going to talk about welding. It's a, it's a recently state-certified program for us, which means students from outside and in our county obviously can take the class. Uh, and we would get, uh, added funds for that as well, since it is state-certified now. So Cory's done a tremendous job since he's taken over. Um, there are five full sections. In fact, we almost, always have to cut some students, um, which is not so fun. Uh, but at the same point in time, it's because he's such a kid magnet that, uh, he has the sections and had, has them fold, uh, full, excuse me. So we're hoping that will continue. Make sure this is ready for you. Make sure this is ready for you. There you go.
As Mr. Poole said, I'm Cory Pollock, I've been with Midland Public Schools since 2011. When I started, we had five sections of welding and you know, that was all me with the courses that you see on here, Hobby Art Welding, Welding Technologies One, Welding Technologies Two as a two-hour block. We've grown quite a bit since then and now the Hobby Art Welding is actually taught by someone else. Mr. Dodik has taught that for the past several years and Mr. Ransom taught that for a couple of years before Mr. Dodik did. So we've grown quite a bit and I want to talk to you about each one of those courses and then some of the competitions and things that we participate in. And then Abby's going to talk about her experience with the program, both with the classes and the competitions. I'm going to start with the Hobby Art Welding and I'm actually going to let Abby talk about that a little bit with her point of view or her perspective from that.
So Hobby Art Welding for me was like a really good intro class, like it wasn't, I really wanted to try welding because my family has a farm and welding is a very valuable skill. So this was an opportunity to lay a little bit of a foundation. It's a one semester class and it's a really great intro and to build a foundation. And it's really good for other students who may not know what they want to do and they want to try something.
No, it's not just you.
Sometimes it is.
That's okay, from Hobby Art Welding Abby went on to Welding Tech One.
Yep, and Welding Tech One, there's four positions that we do and, oh, there it goes. And there's three basic joints or like different types of welds that we do that can help us if we go on. They're like the basic parts of it. And I finished Welding Tech One, like all the projects that we had to do quite early, so I was able to go beyond what was required and do some of the stuff that Welding Tech Two was doing. And I had the opportunity to go to some of the competitions we were doing because I was, and I was really passionate about it.
Thanks Abby, Abby's going to talk about those competitions in just a second here, but I usually don't take first-year students to competitions, but as she said, she was really passionate about it and she was really good at it. So we're going to talk about that in just a second, but after you finish your, your full year of Welding Technologies One, you can go on to Weld Tech Two. Some students have that as a two-hour block. So you're, you're taking what you learned in Welding Tech One, you're getting into more difficult processes, you are learning some new welding processes and just building on what you knew and getting ready for, like she said, some of the competitions. You start looking at more of what kind of job outlook there is, what kind of tests that employers are looking for, things to get you ready for that. With the Welding Tech Two, we have an articulation agreement with Delta College, just like Healthcare Tech was talking about, we also have 12 credit hours available of articulation. So not all students will get that 12 credit hours, but it depends on how far they go in Weld Tech Two and you know, what they achieve. After they do Weld Tech Two, I have some students come back and, and essentially do Weld Tech Two over again, we call it Weld Tech Three. Now they can have more of a focus on the competitions or they can be really honing skills on one particular welding process. I really like to, in that third year, get students all the articulation credit possible for Delta College or you know, get them going in a direction for whether they want to become a welder, they want to be a welding engineer or something like along those lines. Another option students have for their third year is to dual enroll. So I have two students right now who are dual enrolled at Delta College in the morning, so they don't come to Midland High School for first, second or third hour. They take 16 credit hours throughout this school year at Delta on top of the 12 that they articulate. So if, if a student knows that they want to get a welding certificate or an associate's degree from Delta, this is a great option because they can have 28 credit hours done by the time they graduate. And we actually had one student even more than that because he was just so far advanced and just really talented. We actually got him to test out of one more class, so he graduated with 36 credit hours in the welding program, which is great. A lot of the things that, that those third-year students work on is getting ready for competitions. I know I keep saying that, competitions, competitions, that's a big part of what we do and what we're getting students ready for. There are several that we compete in, just going to skip that and talk about them individually. The last couple of years, we have not participated in the Mites competition because it's been a scheduling conflict with one of our other competitions. But with Mites, we take students' projects that they build in the school and it's almost like, like an art show where they go on display, they go against students from other schools, but there's no welding done onsite. What we've replaced that with is some of the hands-on competitions that you do, you know, like I said, onsite. One of those is the Delta College Student Technical Solutions Competition. That is a competition that I can take first-year and second-year students to. So the first-year students, it's great because one, they get to go see the campus at Delta College, you know, just see another shop and see if it's something that maybe they are interested in. It's the first time they really get to get up and be nervous and you know, compete against other high school students, both from high schools and career centers. But we can take first-year and second-year students to that. That is only in the SMAW welding process. The next one is Skills USA. That is a lot more expensive of a competition, but you can tell when you go there that it's, there's a reason it's more expensive. It's a lot more professional, really big prizes, there's multiple levels of competition, it's not just one day. There's a regional, a state, a national competition. I have had several first place in the state winners now over the last few years. The one in the picture, I guess, I don't know who can and cannot see the PowerPoint here, but that was the student that got 36 college credits before he graduated and he was number one in all-around welding. He actually won a welder, which is pretty awesome. And that picture is him with the president of the American Welding Society. Abby also participated in that last year, so she's going to talk to you a little bit about her experience there and then about one of the other competitions as well.
So my experience here was like really nerve-wracking because it was my first experience in a competition setting and because of all the snow days we had last year, I wasn't as prepared as some other people. And at this competition, it's everybody, it's people from career centers, it's high school students. So there's people with so much experience than I had and it was a good opportunity to see, oh wow, these people actually know what they're doing and talking to them and learning new thing, things.
By the way, that might be the first time I've ever heard a student not weld. I appreciate that actually.
So another competition we go to in May is the Ferris State Competition and it's held at Ferris State University and it's really cool because we get a little bit of a tour of the campus and it just blows your mind because here we have our little welding shop in Midland and then you go there and everything is brand-new and you get so many prizes for winning and I won third place for one of the processes that they had there and I won like $600 worth of stuff. And that was just third place, second place won even more and then first place won an actual welder. So it's really cool and you get an opportunity to experience that.
Thanks. Just a side note on that, Abby was part of a three-person group that I had placed last year at Ferris and that is the first time, we've been going to Ferris every year that I've been here, that's the first time we've ever had anyone place and we had three places last year, which was awesome. The pictures here are from another trip that we do to Ferris, I don't know if you want to talk about that for, the field trip we do in the fall?
So in the fall, we take another trip to Ferris and this is more, it's not a competition setting, it's more of Miller showing off what new stuff they have and we have an opportunity to try the different stuff and there's actual welders there who like help us, they're like, hey, come on up, try this out. And then they give you pointers and how to improve. And it's a really cool because you get another tour of shop and you get some one-on-one experience.
The great thing about that is all my Weld Tech Two students get to attend on that day, so everyone has an opportunity to see not only Ferris's campus, but then the, it's called the Miller Road Show. So Miller is a company that makes welders and like Abby said, they bring in all their new, latest, greatest equipment and they have all their welding engineers on hand to show it off and you know, teach us about it, which is great. Another current event that we just recently got to do was we went and toured Case Systems and Boston Tech and talked about some job outlook and opportunity there, which is great. What kind of questions do you guys have for us?
Could you tell us about some of the projects that you would work on during the competitions?
Me or Abby?
Either or. Abby, let's start.
Okay. So there's, you know, we have several different processes that we do. I was involved in a gas-based welding, so you basically, you get a blueprint and you have to build what's on there. So I had to build like a hat-shaped thing with a pipe on the top and you're based, you're graded on how good the welds are and if this would actually hold up if it was put under pressure or something like that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of a hard one to explain, but you did a really good job actually because people say, well, what did you make? Well, I made a weldment. I mean, it's, you know, it's just different welds in different positions and everyone has to do them the same and be able to follow the blueprint and you know, they're graded against the other students. Okay. Can you, can you talk a little bit more about a student's journey to become a journeyman and how our program fits into that? Sure. So if a student wants to go down that path to become a journeyman, I have students that have taken a lot of different roads to do that. Welding's kind of a unique field where there is no set path and there's not a standard. People always say, well, I want to, I want to get certified. Well, that's great, but every company has their own certification process. So you know, we recommend that students go to a post-secondary option like Delta or you know, like we're exploring options today with the Industrial Arts Institute in Onaway. Anyway, you know, it's great to go through those programs to get experience, but there isn't any companies that say, oh, well you have a welding certificate from XYZ School, great, you're hired. They say, okay, that's a great opportunity for you to get a little bit higher on a stack of resumes, now you come in and take our welding test. So I've had students leave my program and go take a welding test and get a job. I've had them move on and go through you know, a post-secondary option and take the same test, you know, end up in the same place. I've also had students, you know, go around that and go into welding engineering, so not do any work in the field, but go, you know, go to Ferris for their bachelor's in welding engineering. So there's a lot of different ways to do that. I do have former students who are welding engineers. I always really liked to brag about one who was a welding engineer for Polaris because he had all kinds of great toys and everyone knows what Polaris is. It's different than when you say some of the other companies that people, you know, my former students work at and people go, what's that? And you're like, I don't really know, he's a welding engineer there though. But now that student left Polaris for a better job at a company I'd never heard of. So, so there's a lot of different ways to do it. You know, I have students who leave the program and they go weld for 10 bucks an hour. And I had a student last year who left the program and was making $29 an hour at 18 years old. So it's, it's kind of all over the board.
You also have a relationship with the Greater Michigan Construction Academy?
Oh, we don't. We've toured the Greater Michigan Construction Academy before, but no, we don't really have any, anything set up with them.
Well, I'm impressed with the number of students that go through your program and how popular and exciting it is and for a culture where sometimes we don't like testing, it seems like the competition is a really exciting way to get, get to that point where you can prove, you know, the skills that you've worked so hard at, at getting. So appreciate all your hard work, both of you, and what a wonderful program.
Thank you. That reminded me of two things I wanted to tell you. One, we started the year with 105 students in welding and that was before Mr. Dodik's Hobby Art Welding Class, which is another 30 students. So we do have a lot of students taking welding. And the other thing I wanted to say was, it took me a while to figure out the competition thing, that how much that motivates students. And once I figured it out, we created a competition in-house that we do called Mig March Madness. So we have, we have a bracket and students have weld-offs and it's, it's become, I have a whole set of rules printed off now and it's all, it's all homemade, we made it all up and it's kind of developed over the years, but you'll never see more sparks flying in the shop than during Mig March Madness because they just, and the trash talk too, it's great.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, next is item 3.2, Shining Stars, Mike.
See if we can follow that up, I'm not sure, but we'll try to top that, so. Our first shining star of the night is going to be Sarah Dooley. So Sarah, if you'd come up and join me, yes, you were hiding back there, wasn't sure you were here for a second, so. Let me talk about you a little bit, Sarah. Sarah joined the MPS team in 2018 as the lead administrative assistant at Seabird Elementary School. Before joining the MPS team, Sarah was part of the Freeland Elementary Office staff for three years. Sarah is finishing her associate's degree this semester and plans to continue on to earn her bachelor's degree. Sarah was nominated for the shining star by MPS staff members. Among their comments were the following. Sarah always had a smile and is ready to take, tackle any issue. She makes the office a welcoming space. Mrs. Dooley is so helpful. No matter what questions or issues I have, she either has the answer or knows who to ask for help. She is so friendly and caring and always offers a smile when you walk into the front office at Seabird. Her organizational skills are amazing and I truly appreciate all that she does for our Seabird family. Sarah brings energy enthusiasm to the Seabird main office every day. She's also, she also is particularly diligent with daily tasks and keeps everyone aware of the needs and happiness in the building. She interacts positively with the students, parents and staff. The day she became a Bulldog is the day Seabird became a better place. Congratulations, Sarah. And our second shining star is Amanda Tomes, which I seen rush in because she was out working with her kids, so you can see why she's a shining star, right Amanda?
I'm at rehearsals for something.
Yep. She'll stand here while I talk about you for a minute. Amanda's a teacher in the district music department. Ms. Tomes joined the MPS music staff in 2012 as an orchestra teacher and has taught orchestra at almost every MPS school during her eight years with us. This year, Amanda's teaching orchestra at HH Dow High, Jefferson Middle and Seabird Elementary. She is an accomplished musician in her own right, specializing in strings, strings and specifically the violin. Amanda is a graduate of Grand Valley State University, earning a bachelor's degree in music education in 2012. Ms. Tomes was nominated for the shining star by the MPS community member. Among their comments were the following. This week was the first Dow High Orchestra Concert of the school year. Ms. Tomes spent the summer researching the program that students presented. The entire program was woven around the history of music in the Holocaust concentration camps and the musicians who were forced to play under horrible duress. Not only did the students learn the history behind these pieces, Ms. Tomes also used the concert to stage to educate the audience members by sharing the stories behind the pieces. I am writing to commend Amanda Tomes. She is a terrific teacher who is gifted in installing love for music in her students. She provides a solid instructional foundation for her students and consistently helps them to improve their technique with their ensemble playing abilities. Congratulations, Amanda.
Not everyone brings a pan club. That's great.
Give it a second?
Yeah, that's fine. Always nice to see the students with them.
Ashfall bids? All right. Item 3.3, this is an action item, asphalt bids and Brian?
Doesn't it get any more exciting than buying asphalt? Although people that drive the northeast backlot, I think are going to be excited about this one. I do it every single morning, so I'm excited to present this one. But this is the first of three items that we're going to present to you for action on this evening. 3.3 asphalt bids. We have accepted bids, provided a tab for you for work throughout MPS.
And Brian?
Doesn't it get any more exciting than buying asphalt? Although people that drive the Northeast back lot, I think are going to be excited about this one. I do it every single morning, so I'm excited to present this one. But this is the first of three items that we're going to present to you for action on this evening. 3.3 asphalt bids. We have accepted bids, provided a tab for you for work throughout MPS. And the areas that are included within this bid are the Northeast St. Andrews Lot, that's the lot behind Northeast where the typical student drop-off is. Both band lots, Midland High and Dow High, the Midland High East Lot, and also the Central Park Collins Street Lot. So those are the areas that are addressed by this asphalt bid. And we recommend issuing a purchase order to the low bidder Ace Saginaw Repaving in the amount of $471,500. And these would be paid for out of our district capital improvement funds.
I move to approve item 3.3, asphalt bids. Support?
Motion by Pam, support by Lynn. Any discussion? Is that a company we've used before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, 3.4. This is another action item, bus purchase.
Yes, sir. We have taken a look at our bus purchasing program under the bonds. We've analyzed the current status of our fleet. We sat down with our mechanic, also with Mr. Moganberg and Mr. Shero as well too, to really plot out our expenditures for the life of our Series 2 bond and also our upcoming Series 3 bond as well too. And so when taking a look at those totals and our long-term plans, we feel it's applicable now to purchase six new buses. And those six buses will be comprised of three sets of two, two 65-passenger lift buses, two 77-passenger buses that are equipped with child restraints, and two 77-passenger buses with traditional equipment. Michigan has a bus purchasing program that makes it pretty easy for us to get comparison type bids. We provided that tab for you and we are issuing a recommendation that we give a purchase order to Midwest Transit of Eden Rapids in the amount of $567,398 for the purchase of those six buses.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve item 3.4 for the purchase of six buses.
Support?
Motion by Phil, support by Pam. Any discussion about the buses?
Question?
Yes, John.
Are these all, are all three of these dealers, or I assume they're, whatever, the seller of the bus? Are these identical buses? So are these apples-to-apples comparisons?
Correct.
Same brand, same?
Yes. Correct. You put the specifications into the bid and then the three different dealers are giving you the prices based on the specifications.
Not like a Buick versus a Chevy?
That's correct.
Okay.
Probably a better comparison would be a distributor versus a dealer.
Got it. Okay.
And from what I remember, we really needed, their lift buses were in dire straits and we were needing to replace those right away.
Well, we did purchase one or two previously and so we're in pretty good shape in that area, but yes.
We've purchased nine previous total with the bond.
And then the buses with the restraints are for what age group?
For anyone, any preschooler has to be in there. And so since we've gotten in that market, instead of purchasing them all separately, they now make them right into the buses.
Purchasing them aftermarket and installing is very labor-intensive and very expensive. It's best to get them upfront.
Great. Thank you.
The early order stock item that's listed under the dealer options, is that just a specific date that we have to place the order by to, because it's significant savings from that particular vendor?
Correct. It's getting in early and then we actually wait on them, Brad, they'll arrive in the summer usually.
Usually around July, if we're lucky. That's why we're getting the purchase in now.
So it's almost like a pre, so they're, they're not sitting out there, so they want that early discounts because as a dealer, you now know what you're ordering to a certain extent.
Okay. And we've also upgraded technologies. Will those be moved from bus to bus?
At times, but sometimes they come with them as well. I don't remember the bid specs if they had the camera on it or not, Brian.
I believe it is being moved from the buses that we have now. I can confirm that with Mr. Moganberg, but we did talk about that. Some of the ones that they're replacing are non-operational right now as well too. So there's certain pieces that are in, certain pieces that we'll have to procure as well.
When we age buses out with old equipment that doesn't compatible, we don't replace.
Correct.
But it's, again, generally cheaper to have it installed, so.
When it says Angel Trax camera system not installed, does that mean that we have to install it?
Correct. We're moving it from a bus then.
Correct.
But they're charging us for it? $2,002?
Then we are purchasing it.
Okay. But we're getting it.
The system, but we're putting it in so we can configure it. Sure. And then the radios we install? Correct. So again, there's, we have certain buses that are on lot right now that we are treating kind of as parts buses. And so there's certain pieces that'll move over, certain pieces that won't. And if you have specific questions about the transformation of those, Mr. Moganberg, we can get those answered for you. He can give you our schedule of what we're replacing, what we're not, and what our internal people are going to be doing.
Okay. Three questions. Anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item 3.5, another action item, Northeast Carpet Purchase.
This will be the final in the series of three. We're asking for approval for this evening. This is for a carpet purchase for 17 different spaces over at Northeast, 14 regular classrooms, the music room, and two office spaces. We did go out and seek bids for this and we're recommending that we award the bid to Superior Floor Covering of Troy in the amount of $54,303.28. This is out of our district capital improvement funds and we'll be looking to do this work over spring break if we get this approved this evening.
Okay. Make a motion to approve Northeast Carpet Purchase, item 3.5. Support? I'm sorry, John?
John.
Okay. Motion Phil, support John. Any discussion? Is this anybody that we've done business with before, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Is it Supreme or Superior or Superb? It says two different things in our papers.
I believe it's Superior.
Okay.
I'm saying that with a levelled measure of confidence, so I'll Google that for you real quick, but I'm pretty sure it's Superior Floor Covering.
There's a carpet that we prefer, that we've had luck with, and they're a preferred vendor, so they get a very aggressive price and the other people can't match them. You may understand that from your industry, I guess, you know, they get a little buying benefit.
Okay.
I stand corrected. It's superb. My apologies.
It is superb.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. We'll make a note.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
There we go.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
None? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Next we have, this is going to be 3.6, which is the item 2.4 carryover. This is approval of the payment of the school systems bills for the month of December 2019 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the total amount of $6,753,905. Any discussion on that item? Brad?
Motion. I'm sorry. I'll make motion to approve school system payments, item 3.6.
Support.
Motion made by Phil, second by Pam. Okay. Now, any discussion? Brad? I see we have a couple added documents into our packets, so I just wanted to double-check to see what the procedure is moving forward. I see that we have some backup on the credit card purchasing and then also on the purchase order side. We put that back to committee, I believe, for a recommendation and now we have some documents here, so I was just wanting to know what the process is moving forward.
I'm not sure I understand your question. So this was...
We have backup in these, which was never a motion that we made. It was put...
You guys requested us.
Right.
We said we'd send it to the committee and the committee moved forward, so we've attached that. So the plan would be to continue if that, if that meets the need of the board.
Okay. That was my question. Is that what the committee decided then?
For FFO, yes.
Okay. That was my question. Okay.
Yes, sir. And the documentation you see reflected is...
Committees are really, make sure you understand, it's really an action.
No, recommendation.
It didn't require a crack recommendation. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So purchase orders and purchase card transactions above the state threshold is the backup documentation that you see?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the Raptor Technologies, I know you've spoken to us about it and we have the documentation here. Is that one that we did not have to vote on?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's a sole source.
Okay.
And it is considered software. And so that's under Object Codes 3000, which do not require your approval.
Okay. And I was just curious where we stand with that system.
Week or two from implement. Training this week, Dave?
Correct.
Yep. So we have to train in front of, and step one, if you recall, I wrote you in the final letter, so that's, that is the visitor piece of it. And then our goal is later this spring to have the volunteer management piece of it and then we'll switch from our communication system, Crisis Go, I'm probably not using the right terminology there, but from our Crisis Go 1 to the Raptor 1 going into the fall next year. So we'll finish the year out with Crisis Go and this is a little more, does a little more than Crisis Go and a little easier as well to use.
There was something in that documentation about student tardiness. Is that something we're going to take advantage of in the future? The Raptor system for tracking or following up with tardies?
So I recall anything on that and I don't think Dave's really mic'd up for that unless you want to go over to Mike, Dave. But I think you may be looking at the visitor in and out portion of that. So that's not necessarily tardiness, but we could use, and there will be a day we may explore a kiosk system where our students who enter and leave our campuses for CTE, do enrollment, those programs. So I think you may be looking at that side of it. Yep, that's correct. And it would flag tardies that way.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
This is really still more about managing entry into, in and out of the building.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to item 4. Anybody wish to address the board, the audience? No? Okay. Number 5, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Do you have some study committee meeting minutes? 5.1? I think Lynn, if you have this right.
Excuse me. The Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Study Committee met on January 21st and we had several things we discussed. First was Student Support Systems Progress Update. Kristi Hainstock and Ann Schiffer gave an update on the district's enhancement of the multi-tiered system of support called MTSS and the alignment with Michigan's Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. Within this, the district will have two main focus areas. First, a safe, collaborative, and equitable environment. And second, further developing a balanced assessment system. Additional information was shared about how the new student support specialist positions, our emerging partnership with the SVSU Rise Program, and existing community resources are supporting these efforts with students and staff. Next, we discuss Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI, update. As the MPS team continues to learn and grow, it has become clear that equity needs to be a central component of the change. Moving forward, the strategy will now be titled Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI. The committee discussed the top three priority action areas, which include providing professional learning for staff, developing a safety net for students who report an incident, and considering opportunities for an equity audit. With Amy Beasley as our DEI consultant, our work will be accelerated. We adjourned at 9:15.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
Item 5.2, textbook adoption. Penny?
Hi, good evening. I do have one book for your consideration this evening. It will come to you for the required 28-day public examination period. This book is to be used in 8th grade English classes. The title is Prisoner B-3087 and the author is Alan Gratz. This is of the same series of the books that we just recently adopted. And thanks to Trish Clancy, who really walked us through this project of adopting these books and procured some grant money to help us pay for them. This book in particular, I wanted to note to you as a board and to the public, is a historical fiction book, but it has been extensively researched and so it gives an accurate depiction of the events of the Holocaust that is appropriate for young readers. And the teachers who reviewed this feel that it is very engaging and appropriate for this grade level. It's going to provide an opportunity for teachers to engage students in really rich academic discourse and dialogue about themes that impact intolerance, individual responsibility to protect the human rights of others, and a message of hope and resiliency. We think this pairs nicely with our diversity, equity, and inclusion work as well. So we're really excited to put this for you for consideration and we'll be back to you next month for your decision about this book. It is available for preview right outside my door of my office. I have a copy for, for you if you'd like to preview.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to Mrs. Clancy for the work that she put in to bring this book forward. Next is item 6, Finance Facilities and Operations, 6.1. We have study committee.
And I can read those. On February 3rd, 2020, we met. We discussed December financials, revenues, and expenditures remain close to budget predictions. The December year-to-year revenue variance is due to the receipt of the final STEM grant in December of 2018. The committee was also given a preview of new purchase order and purchase card board packet reporting. Item 2, Bus Purchases. Bids were solicited for the purchase of six new buses. Administration will recommend the award to Midwest Transit. Bond funds will be utilized for the purchase and we just approved that. Item 3, which is Asphalt Paving Bids. Bids were solicited for resealing and crack sealing at Midland High, Northeast Dow High, and other various locations throughout MPS. Administration will recommend the award to Ace Saginaw Paving Company. Capital improvement funds will be used for those services. Item 4, we covered carpet bids. Bids were solicited for carpeting at Northeast Middle School. Administration recommended the award to Superb Flooring. Capital improvement funds were used for these services and those were approved tonight as well. The final item was Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals. The committee was given a progress update on bargaining with the Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals. Our next FFO meeting will be Monday, March 2nd at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Pam. Next item is item 6.2 for information only, Gifts. That's Brian.
Yep. Thank you. So this evening for information, we have 17 gifts to be presented from 11 separate organizations for a grand total of $10,618.74. And acknowledgements, of course, will scroll at the end of the meeting broadcast. And if okay with you, 6.3, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. And for information, we have the gift of items. These are two separate ones. The first, library books for Plymouth Elementary from Rita Heglin, and then also Battle of Books Resources for Central Park Media Center from the Celine Moore family. We appreciate everyone's generosity and again, will be acknowledged at the end of our video broadcast.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And it goes without saying, we are extraordinarily grateful for the gifts that we get.
Very blessed.
Approve and receive monthly. Next is item 7, Human Resources, Study Committee Minutes.
The HR Study Committee met on February 13th. The first item that we discussed was a progress update on bargaining with the Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals, which we'll hear about a little bit later. We also discussed staff retirements. We went through the list of ten teachers retiring this school year and compared the number of retirements to prior years. Third item was teacher recruitment and job fairs. Mr. Kowalski discussed seven career fairs that the school district will attend this spring. Committee members were also notified that H R will begin working with the district's diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant to implement best practices for recruitment.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is item seven point two.
Thank you. The following staff members have announced their retirements as of the dates listed. Sharon Blaylock, paraprofessional, Central Park, June eleventh. Carol Boychuk, teacher, Midland High School, June twelfth. Roxanne Brooks, counselor, Jefferson Middle School, June twelfth. Charles Dobshinsky, building manager, Northeast Middle School, June thirtieth. Bonnie Gray, teacher, Woodcrest Elementary, June twelfth. Larry Jacobs, Jefferson Middle School teacher, June twelfth. Luann Kuznicki, teacher, Dow High School, June twelfth. Steve Last, teacher, Dow High School, February twenty eighth. Carrie Marchand, teacher, Adams Elementary, June twelfth. Deborah Nunmaker, paraprofessional, Adams, June eleventh. Janice Richter Jones, paraprofessional at Plymouth, June eleventh. Russell Syracuse, bus driver in Transportation Department, June eleventh. And then Julie Milano, assistant principal at Midland High School, March thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next is item eight, correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Under eight point one, you can see the list of correspondence that can be found in the agenda. Item nine is scheduled activities. Of note, the April twenty meeting will begin at six thirty P M, which is a budget workshop with a regular meeting to follow. Next is item ten, this is study and discussion. To the board, are there any members that are looking for any points of clarification or would like the administration team to research any particular items? None? Okay, Mike?
I have one.
I'm sorry, Brad?
I think when we had asked the question a couple times about the, the difference of the expenditures for the high schools, for the bond, is there, I thought you referenced that there was a report. Is there something that's coming out soon for us that would explain the difference in expenditures of the bond?
Well, you get your, in your package, you have that report. So the difference was bid savings at the one building and the others was the added HVAC for the most part at the other building. So what we alluded to, as we go forward, we have savings that if, if we desired, we could easily make that look a little more balanced by adding other, we'll add projects we stay under and we could add projects over at the other building if that was desired. For example, maybe the bleachers, we could pull ahead and do the bleachers, which we repaired a couple summers ago, if I recall, and towards the end of bond. So that's the difference. I mean, the Midland High's budget has been under budget. Dow High, not necessarily over budget, but we added scope with HVAC for sure. And that was the largest part of it. We went from thirteen units to twenty-six units, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the explanation, but if you need to see that, we can, we can easily show that to you, so.
Okay, I just thought in our last meeting that, I thought you mentioned something was coming that would give more clarification to that. That was my question.
I don't recall, but I recall, what I recall is we, we have put on our website for, for our own publicly to see the additional scope that we've added. So we've kept that list, if you recall, we did one a few years ago, we updated it recently. It shows additional scope and then listed as well that we're still three million dollars to the good. So six million dollars, I think, was the additional scope that we've added so far with bid savings and interest. And we'll have more if we keep trending, interest keeps trending well. That's why the three million has kind of stayed there with us continuing to spend more. We've, you know, come in under budget or added interest and been able to keep that around three million, so.
There's actually three million dollars difference between the original budget and what we planned to spend. So there's three million dollars less of scope between Midland High and Dow High than was originally planned for.
So if you're under budget, you've spent less, plus we're not done yet, correct?
Correct.
So we've got more to spend, we'll see how those budgets go. And so I would always recommend that we keep, don't spend all the savings because you just never know until we're done, another two summers of work, where costs are going to go and how we come in. But at the end, you know, we'd like to go out for more work. The whole goal is to do well enough that we can do additional work that fits the bond language. And that, that's where I think you could even it back up if desired. But if you recall, Dow High was considered more of the target because prior to our bond, the sinking foam was spent more at Midland High. So HVAC was more up to date and the controls were more up to date. But I don't know, you know, I don't know how you look at it. We've spent significant amount at Midland High recently in capital improvements. And we're going to spend, we're going to bring you some more. I mean, the bottom floor, we have to place the flooring. We had kind of hoped to have been able to do that and remove the tile with the asbestos and then they seal the mastic, but we found out today that, that they can do that. But the flooring then will warranty the tile adherence. So we're going to spend some more money than we thought originally down there, so we're looking at that. But we're spending, I mean, I guess, I think it's kind of a mix. I mean, the truth is, you may spend a little more bond money, that was the ten over there. By the time we're all done, we're spending catching up general fund as well. So I think, you know, we can keep the running totals to kind of take a look at and make sure we're being fair to both sides. But I don't think that's always.
Yeah, I think, I guess my, my input would be.
It's need.
Yeah, my input would be, you guys know, know this way better than any of the board members do and between you and Bart and Marlo as the, as the experts, do it as need based, not, not trying.
And it's not just Bart and Mal, so, you know, it's, it's a whole lot driven by us and our facility folks. So we tend, when we add scope, it's, it's been more owner driven than chain order driven on the other side. It's always us asking for more and can we afford to do that? We had, every FFO meeting, we're in there almost asking for more and we have, we have a list, guys, of what we hope to do with extra in bond and capital. Because the truth is, we're never going to be a completed project and you know that, but you know, the danger of our facilities. And so I don't think we can spend enough, we'll continue to spend a lot in there. And I think, what I was going to say tonight, we, we originally, at the beginning of the year, probably would have spent a million dollars out of our capital improvement work. And I'm going to say a million five, truth is, it's probably going to hit about two million by the time we're done. Because we've been able to, because we've been trending well, just out of capital improvements at our facilities, so. But yeah, it's, it's exactly that, Brad, it's under budget at Midland High, we've added scope at Dow High, but we still got more work to do and we, and if there's a need and a desire, you know we can find work at both buildings. And if you want to get a little more flat as we go through, we can discuss and go through FFO. But in my mind, if that's the desire, we know those bleachers need to be addressed at some point. And if we can do it ahead of time, why would not do that? We shorted up, if you remember, six, seven years. But we don't necessarily have to go six, seven years, right? They, well enough, and we can give you more detail if you want to come in and we can talk about what exactly you're looking for, we'll show it to you.
Okay. All right, so.
So I have a fish to mind you.
Oh, yes. Discussion question.
Not you, unless you want to hear it, but I'll go through it quickly. Count day last week, ten percent this time, ninety percent in the fall. So it's a smaller amount, but we traditionally have a fairly large drop from first to second semester, mostly at the high schools, but we, we see almost no drop at this point in time. So that's a very positive going forward, which traditionally means your fall count will stay a little better than it has in the past. So all speculation, but looks very good. We toured Representative Glenn through the schools that she did not go through the first time. So we're keeping good contact with our legislators and talking to them. And she's reached out to us multiple times to learn more about schools and school funding and what we're doing there as well. Construction work throughout the district, so if you've been to Dow High, it's a little messy in the front, that platform that was in rough, rough cement shape and sinking in the ground and the steps that were deteriorating. Time to replace those. The design is a little less cement, a little easier maintenance, more green space. And we're excited about what that may look like when we're done. At Dow High, we also are going to pull ahead the windows. And so you'll see windows beginning around the cafeteria, the front area as well. And that construction area, we can pull that ahead safely and get some windows done early before summer, as well as Dow High. Adams Elementary is into their new spaces, the gym cafeteria and kitchen. We've now taken over the old gymnasium and it, it's been deconstructed and it's now back being reconstructed quickly. We think we'll be in there sometime after spring break, so that's on schedule as well. Franklin and East Lawn should be seeing fence going up around those and the wrecking balls hitting there this week or towards the beginning of next week. I think they switched those two projects around, they want to pull Franklin first instead of East Lawn. But either way, it's going to go. I talked a little bit about capital improvements and the one point five million, probably more likely about two million. So we're doing a lot of work through those as well. I shared a PowerPoint and Brad, that might be the document that will help you. I shared that PowerPoint that I used at PIC and it shows some of the savings and additional scope and work in there as well on that PowerPoint, so I wanted to make sure you saw that. Emergency management tabletop exercise for our spring drill that we're going to hold at Midland High is next week. Next Monday, we'll have sixty to seventy probably personnel over at Central Auditorium going through this exercise as a tabletop. And then we're preparing for that May sixteenth where we'll run an exercise at Midland High. So good practice for us. Raptor, we've already talked about, phase one is going in in a week or two. Day's very close and so we're getting off, front staff, office staff ready to go. Calendar, we're not complete yet, hope to have that to you soon. So we need to get the school calendar done, but we haven't been able to do so at that time. Read by grade three is a reality, it's coming soon. And so I wanted to inform you of that process coming out. And so we're going to try to get some letters, we've held some parent meetings. We're going to try to get some of our own letters to the parents that will identify, that will let them know what that test means when their, their children are taken this spring. Because within a few days after the test is done, they'll have results. And the state of Michigan will be sending parents these recommendations that your child be retained. Now, there's an appeal process in there to go through that, all of those procedures going forward. Net, net, if, if our data from last year look at it, it's not a huge group, but we may see some more retentions than we have in past years, so. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Now we, item eleven is closed session.
So we're going to go in close to update you. You should have heard the board committees, that some of you have heard it, but there's a few who have not, I think Lynn and Brad. And so we decided that we'd go in close and inform you now. And the pairs have approved on their side and so we need to prove on our side. But we traditionally inform you before we ask you to take a vote. And so we will do that in March, the actual vote. So we'll go in close, come out, no action tonight, and then there'll be the next time.
I'll move to go into closed session.
Support.
Moved by Pam, support by Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do a roll call for that?
Always safe to do a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, member Lotterback?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Roush, yes. President?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Singer?
Yes.
You have six to nothing.
Can we take like a five minute break before we go into closed session?
Yes.
Yes.